Hello.
Now convening the study session for Tuesday, April 9, 2012. Before we do this, we've -- some email was sent out and we requested actually the 3B, the Oregon City Municipal Stormwater Permit item to be pulled. I think we needed some more time on it, but also if we can do it, the county is having the State of the County address at 7:00 and since most of the county commissioners were nice enough to come to our State of the City address, it might be nice if some of us could turn out for the State of the County address. So if that's already with everybody to pull that 3B? Okay, let's pull. And with that, future agenda items.
Oh. From us? From us?
I think so. Yes.
Okay, good. I would like to get an update on the Neighborhood Watch and the Police Partners Program. And I'd also like to get an update on the water bill and having a little sentence on it about low-income people. And I'd like to get an update on the check register that's...
She's writing, he's writing.
She's got about fifteen more.
Yeah. Can we just email this to you?
Yeah.
The check register that's sent to us by Lorelei, having that extra column added in.
What column were you requesting?
I'm requesting a column that lets us know what account it comes out of. So, and then that's it.
Okay. We go to future study session.
Mayor, can I ask just a question about that?
Yeah, you may.
So are these just updates that you want or are you asking because this is a future agenda item?
Well...
Are you asking for agenda items or just an update?
Just an update.
Like an email update would work and that's fine?
Yes, okay.
With that, we're going to talk about the TSP that has been some time in coming. I think we're -- I presume that this is coming out of Public Works and so I'll direct it, I guess, to John Lewis unless you want to direct it immediately to our consultant.
It's definitely a team effort. I mean, we've got Planning and Public Works have been kind of leading this and actually Laura Butler's been carrying a huge load. So she's in the audience, Christina's in the audience, Tony's here as well, so we've all kind of been working on it especially as we're narrowing the list of issues to a handful of issues which we hope to go over tonight. Carl with DKS is here to do the lion's share of the presentation. We did have a planning -- we've had two planning commission, three planning commission meetings. We had a work session with the planning commission last night, went late, we had a room full of people and it was, there was a lot of interesting feedback about actually mainly one particular project that's shown in our TSP, so we'll talk a little bit about that one. Gail Curtis just walked in, she's with ODOT, she's actually the, she's the grant manager and the one who's been overseeing a lot of our work to date and been involved in many of the meetings that we've had as well. We've been involved in this for well over a year now, probably more like eighteen months of work from selection of consultant through advisory committee meetings to open houses to this legislative approval process. So feels like a lot of work has gone into this and we're feeling good about the document and we're going to go through that in detail. So I guess the only other thing I want to share is there's been a lot of public involvement. We've got, we've had a lot of meetings, meeting after meeting after meeting it seems like. And some of it's repetitive information, just kind of, you know, as we bring each different group, whether it be the CIC or the, or the Planning Commission or the City Commission or neighborhood groups, you know, just trying to get them in understanding what a transportation system plan is. And then we get into the details and so, you know, we've had a lot of online comments, a lot of comments in open houses and I think we're getting to a point where we've got it narrowed to several, maybe a few pretty difficult issues. That's my intro, difficult issues. Go for it, Carl.
Well, before we continue, I should introduce the Chair of the Planning Commission, or Chair, or right, Chair of the Planning Commission?
Maybe we should do the introduction.
Over here, and you're the, you're also on the Planning Commission, so I'd like you to take a moment to introduce yourselves as well because they've just gone through their, their scrutiny.
We've more to come.
I'm Charles Kidwell, Chair of the Planning Commission, and we have had two work sessions and a formal meeting on this TSP. I was also involved with the SAP group and...
SAP?
SAT group. And there was a lot of involvement by the community in all of those meetings, so it's been a very lively and active process.
See, that's an exam I took once, wasn't it? Okay, what does the SAP stand for?
Citizen Advisory.
Oh, C.
Stakeholders.
Stakeholders. Stakeholders.
Okay, very good. And yes, introduce yourself, please.
Zach Henken, Planning Commission.
Name may be Planning Commission.
Okay.
And we got Bob.
Okay, yes, Bob.
Bob, I'm only Planning Commission and also the Traffic Advisory.
Very good. Thank you. Go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So what I have for you tonight is really an overview. I think the most of the time tonight is allocated to questions from you guys and a discussion about that. We had extensive questions and answers last night. So I don't mean to go into this in detail, but I will provide you an overview. This is the components of the TSP, Volume One. I'm going to touch on a few pieces of that and then highlight a few of the issues that were discussed at length at the Planning Commission session last night. So you are familiar with what a transportation system plan update is. Your current one is 2001. If this thing moves ahead, you'll have one in 2013 as far as an update, addressing investments to best meet the goals of the city as it applies to transportation. We have facilities for all kinds of travel. It's not limited to just roads and trucks, but also walking and biking and all other aspects. The public review process was extensive, as John mentioned. We've developed this plan incrementally, a series of memos, about a dozen, stakeholder meetings, agency meetings, community meetings, and city staff on their own went out to dozens of small group meetings. Of course, there was a mail-out of 10,000 postcards, which draws some interest. All that work was developed and put together into the document itself. There's two pieces of it. Volume One is the one that most people want to read. The second volume is the technical piece that really only traffic engineers read and lawyers mostly. One of those two, the traffic engineers or lawyers. And so the intent is for Volume One to provide the bulk of the message that you all would be interested in. So here we are through the hearing process. There's work to be done yet as the Planning Commission continued that hearing last night, so there'll be at least one more session of that. The overall vision in terms of the way we're approaching this update is focusing on kind of this ladder effect that you see on the right, and I think I've shown this to you before, so I won't spend a lot of detail on it, but the idea here is to do the most cost-effective things first and work your way down until really you find no better solution than something much more dramatic, a much larger scale of investment. That's really the approach here and that's, it's not only a cost-effective thing, but it's more practical frankly. I mean, no city has unlimited resources and you're well among that community, so we're trying to make the best investments as we can in the system and make improvements where we can. So one of the things that was a bit different this time around in the TSP update was to look at the goals, those are the bullets on the left, and figure out a way as best we can to kind of measure the performance or how well the projects in the TSP reflect those goals. So that's called a performance-based plan analysis and we did that in terms of the projects you already had in your TSP and then another set of projects that were developed as we went through based on community or staff or our own input. And we, we used that measuring process to kind of rank projects and identify which ones have more value to the community based on these kinds of goals. So a little bit on the trends, this, I think you've seen the Measal map before, so you've got dots and the size of the dot tells you how large the increase is, so really most of these increases are centered around your, the outskirts, the concept plans that have been looked at and adopted for the most part. You've got Park Place Beaver Creek and then to the south there is South Day, which that process is still ongoing, but there's been some allocation for growth there as a placeholder. So this tells us as planners that most of the growth in the city is on the out, on the fringe, there is a fair amount on, in the middle, but it's pretty well distributed amongst the existing neighborhoods. This is a map that shows if you do nothing more than what you've got on the ground today, what the system would look like. Red means heavy congestion, green means little or no congestion, and colors in between is conditions in between, but it basically tells us where to focus our energies in terms of advancing solutions and we did do so as a part of the TSP update. Identified a number of solutions. As you'll find later on in the discussion here, I'm going to highlight a few locations where we frankly didn't have solutions. The solutions were either too big or too complex to come up with solutions as a part of this process. Couple of things to draw your attention to that are in the plan now that weren't in the plan before, so this thing called the multi-modal street design type. Got a picture on the next slide or two that shows you that we're looking at all the components of the street and not just the curb to curb, but how big the sidewalks should be, how big the amenity area should be, all the pieces of the street. Intent there is to give the staff some flexibility in terms of the proper design type along a given stretch of road for a given, you know, the focus is really on what the adjoining land use designations are so that an arterial road can change as it goes through the city depending on what's along the front edge of the road, for example. It's not the same style and look all the way through. So if you do have an arterial, then you do run along retail street, retail space. Traditionally, the engineers and the crowd would say, "No, we don't want on-street parking in front of a, in front of a, on a arterial because arterials move cars." Well, in a retail area, on-street parking is probably not a bad idea, at least worth looking at. So it gives that kind of flexibility to the code. Same thing, you know, with prison for other, provisions for other pieces of the street. How wide do you make the sidewalks? Do you have a median? Do you have bike lanes? Do you have those kinds of things? Those are all more of a menu-based approach. The family-friendly bike route, I think we've talked about this before, it's the next layer down for providing bike lanes on the arterials and collectors. It's a way for people to make their way through the neighborhood mainly through signage and route and wayfinding, that people can get their way through the neighborhood and on lower-volume, lower-speed routes. Couple of other issues that'll be talked about. Christina will talk a little bit about parking, then we're going to talk about mobility targets. So this is the multi-modal street system. The reds, the red lines are the arterials, the reds and blues are the arterials, the greens are the collectors. Any kind of dashed line is a street yet to be built. Most of those dashed lines are reflective straight out of the concept plans that have been adopted by the city, so all the lines in the Park Place area and the Beaver Creek area, those are things that were looked at or reviewed and had citizen input specifically in those areas. So this is what I was talking about in terms of complete street. We're looking from edge to edge, including the walking zone, bikes, driving, and then mirror image on the other side. So all those pieces will be described in the development code. At the time, you know, the city either does a new, new street project or retrofits an existing street project.
Could you just go back to that and tell me where's, where have you seen this in other locations?
What other cities have I seen this? Have I got a list? Hmm.
Because I, I don't, I, I understand the concept of putting the bicycle between the two cars.
Oh, is that specifically what you meant? The bicycle between the cars?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, well, I've seen it in Portland. There's a lot of it in Portland.
One thing I've seen in Portland too is where actually they've, they've got the bike lane adjacent to the curb. You see this on Broadway.
In between the parking.
And then the parking is actually is, is there and separates the bikes better, better from the, actually from the traffic.
It can be on either side.
Yeah.
They have both. I think the preferred way is to have the bikes next to the curb so you don't have door opening issues.
Yes, right.
That's the preferred way, but that's not the only way you can do it.
Right, but I, I'm wondering, how do you think Oregon City's going to fare with this?
There's a place on Beaver Creek where it's like that now, there's a turn lane.
Yeah.
So you can drive for a mile or two with a bicycle in between two cars right now?
But, but what that's demonstrating is the, the car that's near the curb is parked.
Yeah.
Not, that's not a driving lane.
Those are parked cars. That confuse you? Sorry.
Yes. Yeah, thank you, Damon.
But there are a few places where a block or two...
I'm like, oh my God, I can just see this poor little bicycle just flying down the road.
Anywhere in Portland, you can find bikes between cars that are on the street.
Yeah, that's pretty standard.
In their own lane?
No.
No, they're just there. Yeah.
Again, these are...
That is, okay.
This illustration is really to show the pieces of kind of the puzzle here as opposed to any preferred configuration. I mean, you have to pick and choose based on the right of way that you have and what the impending land uses are.
Right.
We're not, we're not suggesting that every street in Oregon City look like the one that's on the slide here.
I'm like, oh my God.
Hmm.
We don't have sidewalks, is it?
Let's make things clear, yeah. The drawings are great sometimes, but...
Yes, thank you, John.
And something that came out in, in our discussions is that's the maximum and it's, it's easy to, you know, put in variances to get less than that.
Okay.
But it's almost impossible to get bigger than that without, you know, code changes and everything else. It's easy to forgive a bike lane on the left-hand side, but it's really tough to get it back from some property owner who says, "Why are you taking my easement?"
You're correct. That's great. Thank you.
Yeah, planning ahead.
Onward. So bike, I don't know how much more I need to say right now about the family-friendly streets. It's just like I said, it's a different tier of, of facilities, you know, I think the research would tell you that the confidence and courage of different bike riders varies across the age spectrum and the skill spectrum. So providing bike lanes just on the higher-speed arterials, that helps the high end of the spectrum that are very comfortable biking in whatever conditions. There's a big chunk in the middle that really don't want to be there, they'd rather be somewhere else, and we're trying to give them a somewhere else to go to. Uh, let's see, I'm going to skip that and go to the map of that. So this is just a quick diagram, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it. The green lines are the family-friendly routes and they're mainly through neighborhoods, mainly through lower-speed, lower-volume routes, mainly indicated just by signs and pavement markings. They're not talking about landscaping or reconstructions or curb extensions or those kinds of things necessarily. It's much lesser scale of investment. Speaking of investments, the interesting thing about this is we've got the categories, we've got a grand total in the plan of 360 projects of about 220 million. Last time we checked, the city doesn't have 220 million for the next 20 years, so our job was to figure out which ones of those really kind of rise above the line as providing the best value to the community and had some likelihood of being funded through the funding mechanisms that you have in place frankly. And your biggest one, I'm not going to dwell on this, I think you've seen this before because this, this one's been around a few months. The funding pie kind of is like that. A lot of your funding for new construction is generated through growth, through STC funding. And I think that's been a theme for the last month or two, is a lot of the funding in this plan is really supported by growth and so you could argue that if growth doesn't happen, a lot of the projects in the plan cannot be constructed.
Correct, you're right.
And, and the opposite of that is if without the growth, the projects kind of don't need to be constructed in a large part, right? I mean, a lot of the projects that are identified, 100% eligible for STC would only be constructed if the growth occurs. So if some of these concept plans have been waiting for annexation for several cycles have not been successful, any projects that are in those areas, unless that annexation happens, well, those are not going to be constructed, right? I mean, even so, because the plan is adopted, it's on the list, if it does move ahead, the pieces are there to go ahead and do it when the time is right.
And any new projects, well, what about projects in existing neighborhoods, like the sidewalks that aren't connected and that type of thing?
Right. Those projects are in there as well, but the, the challenge there is the, the funding is you have to have, use more than one pot. So an STC fund can't be used for those kinds of projects. That has to be, has to come from somewhere else.
Right.
The problem is the somewhere else is very limited.
Yes.
As you all know. So, I mean, the way we kind of arrange this is most of the projects that are likely to be funded are funded because of growth and are in the growth areas. The ones that are in the neighborhood, yes, they, they are a need, they're a high priority, but until the city finds a way to, to get that other piece, it's going to be difficult to improve those. This slide pretty much says the same thing. It's about half and half in terms of what's eligible for STC funding. So we changed our terminology in here. If you've read through the plan, we had some jurgony things in there. I think we heard back from folks about fiscally constrained. People don't like those two words next to each other, fiscally constrained. So we changed it now henceforth, so when the new version comes out of the TSP, it's going to use this terminology, likely to be funded, not likely to be funded. So it's much more clear about...
That is very clear.
What's in and what's out.
Mm-hmm.
And of course, those things could change, the grant, the city could apply for grants, you know, that kind of things. We didn't factor any of that in, so the more successful they are, the more projects will advance. We didn't make any assumptions about that. So the next few slides are really just, you know, some snapshots of the maps about where the projects are. You're not going to pick up the details on this, but they're broken down into pieces, so you've got intersections, improvements and improvements related to, or traffic management control, for example, speed zone feedback signs, so when your car's driving by, it'll actually tell you what your real speed is. Those kinds of things, you know, while there are...
I don't know that I really want to know.
Well, yeah, while those can be a bit of an investment, they've proven to be pretty effective.
Yes, yeah.
You know, I'm, I'm still waiting for the day when cars start to be manufactured with the, with the, the speed you're driving up in the windshield, you know, heads-up display. If they can do it for fighter jets, why can't they do it for cars?
Yeah.
And then a really annoying beep if you're going over.
Yeah. Some kind of acknowledgement.
The faster you go, the darker you get.
That's my dream.
I would, back to that one, just, there's, again, the blue notes denote planned roundabouts. So, you know, roundabouts are, have some efficiencies to them that often people don't think about, they just think about whether they like them or not. But when you compare the long-term maintenance cost to a roundabout versus a signalized intersection, there's a big difference. So, so there's a lot of places in town proposing those kinds of...
Yeah, we identified a handful there.
If I could just interject for a moment while you're on the subject of speed, that was probably one of the top 10 comments that we heard during our public meetings from the audience. People really got excited about people speeding through their neighborhoods, residential neighborhoods.
We, we live off of Lynn and it's up to 35 now, and I got passed on the right today. And if there would have been a pedestrian in that lane, they would have been gone. And it was terrible and I was totally going the speed limit, so they must have passed me at 40, 45 on the right.
So the outcome of that discussion was that this plan does not address enforcement.
Mm-hmm, right.
And that's, that's another large issue that needs to be considered, but it's outside the purview of the TSP.
Right. Right, unfortunately. Yeah, going back to the complete streets a bit, I mean, I know you're not going to rebuild a lot of streets, but the, the notion there was to actually allow in the, this proper location actually designed for narrower travel lanes.
Yeah, that drives me crazy.
Narrower travel lanes?
Yeah.
Well, the reason people speed is because it feels like they can speed.
I know, it's true, it's true.
All the science tells you, the narrower it looks, the slower they'll go.
That's why she doesn't like them.
You, this person knows me. I have a question.
Okay.
I can't tell, but is the roundabout still in their plan for where it intersects Division?
Yeah.
It's still there?
D-30.
It's the one right below the...
That's D-30.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because I couldn't see it there.
That's right, yeah, right.
By the Division in Malala?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
D-30 right there in the middle of the map.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, there's several, several there. There's the one at Warner Milney and...
I'm kind of surprised there's so many in this. This is, I don't know, I haven't noticed that.
Good things, surprise good or surprise bad?
No, I think it's good.
I'll oppose a question. Where we had a roundabout disappear on us was the one there on Dunes, Dunes onto Clackman River. I see it's a plan to always stop control and yet so much of that traffic, you know, the only traffic that goes south there is essentially boats. And most of the traffic is accessing Dunes from Clackmit and if we have the development there occurring on the cove, or I should say when we have a development there on the cove, that's going to be more heavily used and isn't always stop a reasonable solution if you in fact, the, most of the through traffic isn't going to be going south there off of, off of Clackmit River Drive.
Good question, we'll have to look at that.
Yeah. Currently, it currently is through for, right currently, the only place you have to stop really is when you're coming off of the boat ramp and so forth, otherwise it's a through, it's through, right turn permitted and left turn permitted without stopping when you hit that particular point. And that makes more sense in terms of the volume of the traffic.
Okay, well...
Anyway, that's some...
One more comment on roundabouts.
Okay.
Okay, as I'm speeding through Portland, as Commissioner Smith says, I speed lots of roundabouts and what I have heard...
This is the east side, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And what I've heard is like, I think Commissioner Roth told me about this, I have seen it happen also, like a big semi will try and do this roundabout and it just really slows everything down. And I don't know, you know, it's off of Caesar Chavez Way, 39th.
Lee's.
Lee's? Oh, that's a classic.
That's a great roundabout.
That's really not a roundabout technically. Roundabouts...
Well, I'm just, you know...
Roundabouts don't have signals on the entry points for one thing.
I'm just, you know, kind of like, is that like something that's addressed?
Plus, I think that's a really old roundabout.
It is, but if, I only lived about five blocks from, from my youth. It used to be very traffic-prone until they changed the lane structure there, traffic accident prone.
Oh.
But actually, it functions very, very well now. It's true that everybody has to stop before they go in. It's not, it's not signalized, but...
Yeah.
But I think a right lane, you don't have to if you're making a right turn.
Somewhere. Anyway, the answer is...
Yeah, it doesn't like the signal.
The science behind roundabout safety has changed a lot in the last 50 years. And so the, there's a lot of keys to designing it for trucks...
Okay, okay.
That that one doesn't have.
No, that one doesn't.
Let me, we got the new roundabout there on, on Highway 213.
Right.
And getting onto 213.
That's a brand new one.
And, and the thing is, the lane looks round, but you've got this flat area where a trailer coming along can come up onto kind of a shoulder that's there.
Right, right.
And that works, that seems to work very well.
That's the way, that's, that's the design I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that inner apron that's designed for trucks that, that track off the circle.
Because, you know, especially the roundabout in Damon's neighborhood here, the hospitals over here and they get a lot of big semi truck deliveries, so I just, I want that roundabout, but...
Yeah, we, well, we looked at that, we tried to look at, you know, if the, the scale of the intersection was feasible to fit a roundabout because as you know, roundabouts take up more space than the traditional signal setup. But then again, roundabouts don't burn a lot of energy and you don't have to replace the loops and the light bulbs for roundabouts, which is, it's a plus. You don't have to worry about signal timing a roundabout.
Trust me, I'm pro roundabout, especially there.
Okay. All right, that was, okay. Let's see, we talked about that, street and intersection, extensions, a handful of those. Biking solutions, lots of biking solutions. A lot of these are the family-friendly things, but there are other multi-use trails as well. Um, let's see, I'm waiting for my, there we go. This was a new category this year, walking and biking solution, so we had a bit of a trail designations. Can't remember if it was here or the next one. Well, one of these had indications where we actually wanted to improve, enhance the the crossings on arterials. So, that, oh, the red dots. Yeah. So, you can see the red dots on this map. We're looking for places where you're going to do better than a crosswalk. You're going to do something that's more significant, like the flashing, the rapid flashing beacons, that kind of a thing.
Oh, yeah.
Those seems to be not only cost-effective, but actually very effective in changing the way drivers react. Compliance rate is like, mm, it goes from about 10% to 90%. But, those are kind of hard to miss, those things. You can see them about 500 feet away when they're on.
The flashing red?
The rapid flashing, well, they're little rectangular beacons. And, I think there's some on, where was I the other night? Foster?
Second Foster, Fred Meyer.
Yeah. When those things are on, you can see them from a quarter mile away, easy.
Yeah.
And, so, you slow down, and you start looking for pedestrians, and that's what you want.
Yes, absolutely.
What about the little stop signs that you see at some crosswalks? Those are real effective, to me at least.
Signs at the crosswalks.
Yes, a little stop sign, and it says, if there's a pedestrian in the crosswalk, state laws says you're-
Well, those, yeah, that's, that's also a possibility. So, the, the thing we were thinking about here was more kind of the other category, because this, these are, well, anyway, yeah, those, that would be a different kind of treatment. So, the circle, the red circle there is to indicate that you've got to do something more enhanced, better safety provision, which is a specific piece that we, we think makes this work better, because it's one thing to have sidewalks, but if you can't cross the street-
Right.
-that's a piece that's often been missing in, in other plans. So, that's a big step. So, now, we're on to the new issues. I think this is Christina, right? Christina, you're going to bail me out of parking?
Take the baton.
Okay.
Should I do this overview quickly? I know, I have a lot of items tonight. As part of the transportation plan update, we are required to amend our development code to meet different requirements. And, one of them is the regional, the RFTP, the Regional Transportation Framework Plan. And, one of the requirements is to have a differentiated minimum parking requirements in high transit and downtown areas. And, the original proposal that came back from our planning consultant with, not, not with Carl, but with some, the sub, was to look at a zero parking minimums for downtown for when new construction comes in. And, we felt that, based on kind of the, what we've been hearing from Oregon City, and we wanted more than just the 5th through 10th downtown, we worked to find a, kind of an Oregon City approach to that and require a little bit more parking downtown, but have a, a reduced parking from the citywide parking standards, because currently, right now, I'll go this way, we have a standard either based on the unit for multifamily project over 1,000 square feet, based on the use. And, in black, you'll see is our citywide standard. So, that's everything from a new project up in Hilltop to a new project, new development application that would be like on 10th and Main, for example. And, we felt that something in downtown, or even in McLaughlin, had a different land use component, and it was definitely a multi, multimodal area where people are going to walk, take transit, trip chain, park, and maybe go to two or three different uses, rather than you might have Hilltop, you might have less opportunity to park in one place and visit multiple stores or offices. So, we looked at doing an across-the-board reduction in downtown, and I'll go back to the map, where we'd like to create two overlay districts, a downtown parking overlay district and a McLaughlin parking overlay district. And, the downtown district is in blue. It generally starts the south at the Blue Heron, Lount Falls site, goes through kind of the traditional downtown, through the north end, and then has a northern terminus at the Amtrak station. So, that is all areas own mixed-use downtown. The purple area is the McLaughlin commercial parking overlay, and that is the mixed-use corridor zoning up in McLaughlin. So, that's along 7th Street, Center and High. So, I'll go back. Initially, there was a proposal for a 35% across-the-board reduction at McLaughlin, and the planning commission has asked myself to come back and see what a 25% reduction would look like. And, one thing the planning commission has yet to do, and though, through the continued hearing, they're going to have, continue to have some of that conversation about 25 versus 35%. On the far right, you'll see the parking study recommendations, and you'll see a letter on your dais from Rick Williams Consulting. Looks like this. We contacted Rick Williams, who performed the 2009 parking study for the city. And, one of his recommendations downtown is he saw a 1.43 spaces per 1,000 as the real use of the site, of downtown. And, his recommendation for 5th through 10th was actually requiring only .7 spaces per 1,000 square feet for new use, because what he was saying is you, and this comes out of his letter, is the city really needs to look at rightsizing its parking. I kind of like that, that terminology, is to be competitive as, as a city, but also to promote a livable community. As a city, we want to have our minimum parking requirements to be just under what the actual use of the parking is. That is, if we prescribe minimum parking above what the average use is, we're actually mandating a more, or a less dense development model. So, it, what he was trying to do is to, through the parking study, he identified the 1.43 spaces, 1.43 spaces per 1,000 square feet is the real use downtown. So, his recommendation was .7, but that was only a tiny piece of the puzzle. And, what we're trying to do is extrapolate that through downtown, the whole downtown, off of McLaughlin. So, about a week and a half ago, we asked him to take a look at these proposed changes. And, based on the work he did in 2009, but also the work that he does throughout the northwest region, he pretty much is a parking consultant. So, he works with cities up and down the west coast, in Oregon, in Puget Sound, and helps them rightsize their parking. And, the letter, you don't have to read it, but please take it home. This was entered into the record at the planning commission hearing last week, and it's in the record, and you can take it home. But, he really looks at our proposal in the lens of all the work he's done in the region, and how he really feels that we are at the, kind of the, he calls it the first recalibration. And, his really recommendation is this, this makes a reasonable recalibration, but like a lot of things, there may be a later time where we want to recalibrate a different area. But, this is, our recommendation is, is for this level today.
And, that is actually reducing parking or increasing?
It's reducing the minimum parking, off-street parking spaces required for new development. And, actually, I want to show you an example. Let me do an escape. This kind of tells you a little about what happens when you have a one-size-fits-all approach. This is a proposal for the 10th and Main space. And, just running the numbers have really become apparent how having a, whoa, sorry, one-size-fits-all approach is problematic. Is approximately a 19,000 square foot office building with 2.7 spaces per 1,000 square feet, which is the citywide requirement, comes to a 52 parking space requirement, the 10th and Main. So, if you were trying to simultaneously promote new development downtown and still meet that numbers, you can't actually do that. And, the, an example for this is, this is their proposal. They were looking at it with tuck-under parking because of the grade change. They could have a little tuck-under parking. And, that is 25 spaces or 28 spaces. So, that actually is half of what the required parking would be if they just went with our current table. So, pretty much, any new development downtown that wants to have a substantial development is almost fundamentally not be able to make our parking code. So, the options are either you build structured parking for your individual use, which I'm not a market analysis, but a market analyst, but I can tell you that's going to be very problematic in our market if we're having enough trouble trying to find a place for municipal structured parking. And, secondly, if you are a developer, someone wants to develop, and your financing for your project is based on a planning commission variance for parking reduction, where you have to wait till you get all through the process and pay your architects to create the plans, and you might, you might not be able to get any of your performa money or your financing money until you get that planning commission variance at the very end of the planning process. Doesn't really put us in a competitive advantage for other cities of saying, this is a place you can, you can develop if everything is contingent on a planning commission variance for parking reductions. So, what we're trying to do with these recommendations is bring it more in line, which would be a reasonable approach to parking.
And, this is strictly new business?
New business, new construction, or, or if someone to do a large addition to their existing building, that, that new addition would have, could be, would be calculated for required off-street parking.
You know, I can see that logic for commercial development, because people come and go, and it's staggered. But, for residential, where everybody's pretty much, you know, home to sleep, and not having a space, you know, per unit or something like that, I can see how that could be problematic. And, one of the goals is to try to bring residential to downtown.
Right. And, you know, one thing I wanted to, I don't know if you've been hearing some of the talk this last week about City Portland and how they're approaching parking, just to give a, a little bit of a goalpost for you. The City of Portland and their grand compromise, right now, they don't require any minimum parking for multifamily on these major corridor streets. And, the grand compromise, I think I have a slide on that, is .25 spaces per thou, I mean, 25 spaces for every, so, one parking space for every four units. So, that is where, that's their grand parking-
For every how many?
Four units. So, one parking space for four units. And, there, and then, they're saying, that's for projects over 30 or 40 units. So, that's kind of the City of Portland discussion here. And, what we're recommending is here, and this is, if you look at the downtown numbers, that would be a two, a one-unit, a one-bedroom unit would be .62 spaces per unit. So, we're still much higher than kind of the grand compromise for, for larger multifamily projects, just to kind of give you. City of, like, Oswego last year looked at doing parking reductions a lot like this. They had kind of two, two zones. And, they're little apples and oranges on how they, they look at parking allotments, but it came out about the same level. Their planning commission approved it, but it's currently kind of permanently tabled right now, and waiting for direction from the new city council. But, we were, I was encouraged that we were kind of thinking along the same lines about the level of reduction that seemed reasonable. And, this is, once again, for new construction, large additions-
Only new.
...and for off-street parking, what the requirements would be.
And, you have presented this project to Main Street, I assume?
I have shared this, and actually, the PowerPoint before, with both Amber Holvik at the Chamber of Commerce, Blaine Meyer, who's on their subcommittee, as well as Lloyd Purdy. And, Lloyd has sent this out to all of his members.
Okay.
Can, can you define for me exactly what a unit is?
A unit would be a, per unit, so like a one-bedroom. So, if I have an apartment complex with 21-bedroom units-
Mm-hmm.
-I would take 20 times .62, and that would be the number of off-street parking spaces I would need.
Charles, are you going to, excuse me, are you, are you going to address Denise's concerns about the impact this has on the McLaughlin neighborhood or Paul's?
It's a, Tom Gia, also from the Compania Commission. We got some introductions down here.
Well, you're, you're going to show the map?
Yeah. I can show the map. And, then, the, the discussion last night, I mean, the planning commission isn't quite at the point to make their full recommendation, and there was discussions about parking management kind of being close with, really hand-in-hand with development standards. And, I think a key thing to explain is, this is a development code for one piece in time when someone applies for a development application, whereas parking management tools are ongoing, everyday ways to look at better utilizing the parking we have. And, that's kind of a day-to-day management, not necessarily a development, piece-in-time development application. And, parking management can be anything from working on the price of your, of your parking meters, where your parking passes, encouraging business owners to have their employees bike, walk, take transit. You know, what are we, are we, as we grow, maybe in the north end, are we properly, over the years, properly signing, how, how many, you know, a two-hour versus five-hour parking? So, that's that active management, which is different than the one-piece, point-in-time development application for how many, how big your parking lot should be. And, I think what, what Rick is saying is, if you overbuild your parking lot, you're kind of committed to that, that level of, and less dense development. Whereas, what's the, the last page? I want to say the, in a summary, as Daniel Rose, Senior Planner for King County, put it, "The status quo has been to overbuild parking and walk away, rather than advocate for less parking, and not plan your city as if it's, you were a Walmart parking lot." But, you know, the idea is you can't just build parking lots and then walk away. It's an active management to the side. So, that's some of the conversations that the planning commission had last night.
Denise? If I could maybe expand on that a little bit. If you look at the, the map that shows the zones, the downtown zone would be the light blue, and, and the McLaughlin neighborhood is the kind of pinkish color.
Christine, do you want to put it on this?
Oh, sure.
And, the, the thing that, we had some feedback from the public yesterday, and actually, the last couple sessions. But, the, the concern is that as you reduce parking in either of those zones, if people run out of places to park, then the natural tendency is, you basically have two choices. You find another mode of transportation to get you there, which is one of the underlying goals of the parking reduction. But, the other alternative is for people to park outside that zone.
In the neighborhood.
And, so that, you get a spillover, you get a spillover effect into the neighborhood. So, the discussion we had last night centered around the idea of a parking management plan that restricted people from parking and using neighborhood parking for the use of the businesses, because people that live in that neighborhood are impacted by that. And, one of the things we suggested is that a parking management plan where perhaps you have restricted parking for residents of a neighborhood to protect their ability to park close to their, their residents, really ought to go hand-in-hand. It's really not part of the transportation plan itself, but there needs to be a policy that addresses that kind of hand-in-hand with the TSP.
I think it's important to mention also that these are not areas of the city that are going to be getting a whole lot of growth. And, if you look at all of the projects that were planned, 54% were walking, biking, mixed-use. So, over the course of, you know, the next 20 years, we're going to be seeing ideally a decrease in driving. So, while we might have some frustration or over periodic parking within the neighborhoods, ideally, we're fighting for a system where there is going to be more use of bicycles, more use of walking. And, we're going to be building upon a system that is going to increase the development and also the walkability of those areas.
The, the big concern of the McLaughlin neighborhood is that you're, you're like, well, you are a city, but it's like putting out a bunch of laws and hiring no policemen.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you know, you've got these, these rules, you've got, you know, and, and if there's nobody, you know, like, well, for instance, Commissioner McGriff mentioned, right now, she's got people who work downtown parking in front of her, her house on Washington Street, because they don't want to park in the two-hour meter spot, and they don't want to, you know, go to a lot. So, this potential density increase is, it's already starting to spill out. But, at the same time, we recognize that the more things there are for people to do downtown, the more, you know, benefit this, the city gets. We got a letter in our packet last night from McLaughlin Neighborhood Association that said, you know, 50% is fine downtown, but don't change the McLaughlin commercial overlay district, so whatever it was called. A, because the residential spillover, and B, because that'll encourage people to look downtown to develop, rather than along these two corridors, which don't have a lot of infill options right now that aren't residential. I mean, you look along that, that highlighted area-
Right.
...and 50% of the, the buildings along there are residents, residential. So, you know, it would mean either they convert to offices, or, you know, it's a historic district, which is the other impact. So, there isn't a lot of chances to just tear down a house and build up a building, because it's a protected building.
Right. Right.
So, the irony on, on the two issues that really had the most feedback in terms of negative concerns was speed and parking, which both relate to enforcement more than, more than this TSP.
Right. Right.
So, I think we were hearing a lot about how's this going to be enforced for both the parking and the speed.
Right. And, David, maybe you can, or Doug, maybe, wasn't there at one time, residents had a parking, like, permit that they would put in their car?
There is a, a program for that, but it requires of, you know, an active group of, of people along a street to, to apply for it, and goes through a process. Then, signage goes up and, you know, and they get permits. But, again, it means parking enforcement needs to be driving along chalking tires in those areas-
I was going to ask, is that-
...issuing tickets and-
Is it still act- Is it still active? Do groups still use it?
It's, the program's still out, but I don't know if anybody's particularly used it recently.
I think it's, I mean, the, there's, it's more like tools in the toolbox, I know it's often, but, but it doesn't necessarily need to do a, a plan, like, you don't have to hire to create a plan, but it's more of, these are all the tools we can use-
Yeah.
...to actively manage the on-street parking we have, and we can adjust as the city grows or development happens, or people start to care, not to care.
My question is that it gave you a twenty-four-hour permit to park for your property. I, I don't think it was very onerous, but I don't think, I don't think many people know about it.
Right. There's lots of ways to do parking management. It's just more of-
Well, and what I'm hearing is, we have to work on our code enforcement. I mean, if we're gonna actually solve the issue, we're gonna have to get that moving.
Yeah. I think the key with this is, this is a finite point in time-
Yeah.
...to change the code, and parking management never ends. I mean, it's, it's always something the city will be working on, so, but, but that's something that I think the planning commission wanted to emphasize, that they were, you know, in the long run, you need both.
Another passionate issue that was brought up by Paul Edgar was with the reduction of spaces downtown, and we still have the issue of handicap people losing more and more spaces all the time. And he had some letter, I think, sent, sent out to several of you regarding talking to some judge at the, at the county courthouse, but his main compassion last night was, we are endangering all those handicap people who come downtown as jurors or to shop, and it's hard enough for them to find a parking spot, and then they have to walk quite a distance, a lot of them can't do it. And it's a, that was a big concern of his.
Do you know when maybe he sent that letter out? I don't remember seeing the letter.
I don't know, but his, his testimony involved really a lot of concern about the, the demand of parking on the downtown area, just due to court employees and, and people coming to the court. And if, if you reduce the parking in the downtown court, he, he was concerned about the impact on the businesses and things, because that is kind of a fixed amount of parking that's being used by the court system.
Yeah, yeah. And I know that at some point, we are gonna have a, a work session with the county and, about the parking.
I'm on the, I'm at the chair. I'm on the-
Oh, we got that? I don't, I don't see it.
We're just all throwing it.
Really, the other, clearly, the screen.
We have the screen going on here.
So I, I heard this mentioned, and I've heard Mr. Edgar say that, but I also know that the police chief reported to us, we actually added handicap parking spaces since the commission directed us to look at those.
Yeah.
There's been a, almost double increase, I think, in the number of spaces.
Yeah.
And they're monitoring those, and we are gonna have another report to the city commission under my reports in a couple of weeks, where Lieutenant Clear will be here to talk to you more about that, those details and how that's working. So I don't know if Mr. Edgar's-
He said it last night, but he was also passionate about the fact that handicap people, this is the only city where they have to pay to park, even with their handicap sticker, that's what he was-
I don't know how old his research is, or if he's had a chance to talk to the police department about the additional spaces.
Don't know.
Was he passionate?
Oh.
See that voice raise?
One, one issue with the handicap permits, you know, physicians can issue them, and my wife got issued one, it was good for four years, although she, her knee issue was taken care of in surgery, she still has a handicap permit. So it doesn't, you know, just because a person has a handicap permit doesn't mean they're permanently handicapped. And there's a distinction between somebody who's perhaps got a surgery, got something for four years, in fact, doesn't have the problem after, one year after the surgery. So that's, that's one issue. It doesn't mean they're permanently handicapped, and they, they can get abused, is what I'm saying.
Yes.
Everybody had one. Just kidding.
There's another factor involved, too. We're gonna invite people downtown to live in mixed-use condos and what have you, and I'm driving my seventy-five-thousand-dollar Lexus.
You need to lean forward.
Okay. Want me to start over? And I'm driving my seventy-five-thousand-dollar Lexus, not that I drive one. I want that thing as close to my living quarters as I can get it.
Yes.
And I want it off the street, where nobody can see it, 'cause it's a, an attractive nuisance.
Yeah.
You don't want the car, they want what's in the car. So-
No, I'd take the car.
People aren't gonna-
David wants that.
People are not gonna give up their cars, folks. That's what this traffic, this, that's what this traffic study's all about, how to accommodate traffic.
Yeah.
And I, you give up your car before I give up mine.
And let's get-
Okay, so we gotta be practical about it.
Yes, absolutely.
And these are parking minimums. You know, most likely, if it's a condo, or you have a higher-priced unit, most likely the developer's gonna incorporate secured parking. But by not having a reduction parking minimums, we're precluding other development opportunities, affordable housing, others where secured onsite parking is not automatically assumed. So this is parking minimums. It's not saying the market can choose to go above the minimum, and often does.
Right. Okay.
Railroad Avenue is in which overlay district?
Railroad would be downtown.
Okay, 'cause that's not the way it shows on the map. It shows it is, is part of the McLaughlin. It's, it's not very well done, or, it's not very accurate.
Well, you know, that's an interesting one, because the direction I gave to GIS is you always want to do it to the middle of the street.
Right.
And I think the middle of the street to railroad gets confusing because of the hills.
Yes. So I'll take a look at that. That is, or geography-
I figured it would be McLaughlin, but, or, I mean, downtown.
Geography makes directions.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Anybody have any other questions? I think we're gonna move on to the mobility standards.
I had, I had a point that I got overlooked on the, kind of back with crosswalks and beacons.
Sure.
I, I brought this up, I think, at one of the work sessions or one of the open houses. And I, I guess in the same way I would think about our, in, in certain neighborhoods, we have different requirements for signage, et cetera, lighted signage, based on, you know, whether it's a historic district, et cetera.
Right.
You know, flashing beacons on Powell Boulevard is different than flashing beacons on Seventh Street in a historic district. And, I mean, with flashing lights, we don't really allow that kind of situation in, you know, reader board signage or anything else in those, those districts, really. So I, I'm curious about that, because it is a very visual distraction, and it doesn't, you know, on Malala Avenue, it seems it would fit. I, I don't know how it fits in, in a McLaughlin neighborhood kind of situation or downtown.
I actually have an easy answer for you. Public, substantial public involvement, I mean, public improvement in the right-of-way in McLaughlin Conservation District requires a historic review board review. So at that time, take a look at it.
Okay.
I have a question, too.
Well, wait a minute. We proposed and are planning to install that flashing Rapid Beacon in, on, at the corner of-
Right.
-at the intersection of Seventh and John Adams. We're not planning to go through historic review for that.
Why not?
Why not?
If that's, well.
My key?
That's my, I mean, that's my exact point. It's, it doesn't, to, you know-
All the planners and the public works shall be friends, and-
Sleep plans.
I guess, I guess, I don't know. I don't know. We put electronic speed zone signs in that neighborhood as well.
Yes, you do.
We've done a lot of signage improvements that, you know, they're just standard street signs that we don't go through that process. So this is, this is a new idea, I guess. It was, I mean, that particular location was chosen because we had so much input from the neighborhood about why that was something that they felt was important, and it was a test case, or it is going to be a test case. So I had thought about the historic perspective, to tell you the truth.
Well, I-
I mean, we've got artwork on Seventh, we've got eight years of-
I think artwork's different than bright flashing lights.
I think bright flashing lights are very artistic. I don't know what those statues are. They look like rusty metal.
So one of the points I wanna make is, it's, I mean, it's a general point about, that's, you know, this usage, too, but in, in certain, certain neighborhoods, there's an expectation for the way that the neighborhood looks in, in terms of its heritage, et cetera. And this, this definitely came up, we kind of completely overlooked it, but it came up, I remember the discussion when we took the parking meters out. The old ti-, the old parking meters versus the new, the new parking meters. So every, every little, one of these new things that we add to the city slowly takes away the heritage and the, the character of the city. And it's little by little, and if it's not asked, slowly, it is all gone. So, so it's, it's little pieces like that, that I think, you know, if we do it one crosswalk, then it's citywide, and, and when we, when we see, you know, flashing lights all throughout our historic district, is that something we're okay with? I don't know. But I think it's a question we need to start asking, 'cause it's not just, you know, parking meters or, or signage, or, or crosswalks. I think it could kind of go on to so many other areas as we go through. And it's at what point do we start asking that?
The speed, I think these speed monitors are a good example. Actually, it was a strong demand on the part of the neighborhood that they be put in there, and be put there on a, we had a traveling one, and that wasn't sufficient for the neighborhood, so we've got them permanently installed there, and they didn't go through a historic review board.
And the definition of substantial public improvement is, definitely, there's a, there's a, a bit of qualitative analysis.
Have the flashing light embedded in something that looks like a carriage lantern.
Exactly.
Well, there are some areas of the historic district where flashing red light is appropriate and historic.
I wouldn't know about those.
Especially considering the history of the McLaughlin House.
I wouldn't know about those.
Yeah, yeah, but it was in a different place.
Technicality.
Move, move the history movement.
How do you know, Damon?
I have a question.
So we should use the cast iron standards for those signs.
There's, there's, there's a place for-
I have a question about the roundabouts. Back to that. Having crossed Division, where'd you go? There he is. Having crossed Division and Malala this morning, how do you cross the street if you've got a roundabout?
Circular motion.
Yeah.
I don't move as fast as they do.
That's a good question.
I'm a little curious about the question. So that, I mean, roundabouts have crosswalks, just like regular intersection.
And sidewalks.
And sidewalks.
If you go through L.A.'s addition, I mean, they've got stop signs at every one of the intersections going into there. Now, that's not what you're gonna recommend here, but-
You pull, generally in roundabouts, the, the crosswalk's a little bit further back from the intersections for visibility reasons, but it's the same pieces. I mean, you walk on a sidewalk, you cross the street through a crosswalk.
Okay, because I don't recall a crosswalk down there in that new one. Is there?
Which one?
Is there? Down by Home Depot?
Yeah, there is.
Okay.
It's a three, you know, there's, there's, I don't, is there crosswalks to get across Washington? I know there is across the Blackwater Drive, but-
Yeah, I think.
I'm trying to remember.
Slowly, but fast.
I was just trying to figure out, there's a lot of cars coming down Malala and Seventh there, and how would you ever?
It's actually, it's actually easy, because you've got really just one lane to cross, and then you've got a median to, to a refuge, and then you cross the next leg, so-
It's like-
It is, they're, actually, it's the bicyclists that struggle a little bit more than pedestrians with roundabouts, 'cause they, they give you, usually they give you the option of going through the roundabout as a bicyclist, if you're comfortable with cars, or moving on to the sidewalk with pedestrians, and then there's a pedestrian-bicycle conflict. But, but, I mean, that's just a learning curve that the region is kind of learning together right now.
Any other comments, questions? Let's go forward.
All right, come on, Gail. So I think this, the, you know, the last slide. I mentioned earlier, we solved most of the problems with projects. There was a few locations that we did not have easy or fundable projects to solve the problem with. And when I say problem, in terms of those listed there on the top piece, the two interchange that, well, interchanges at 205, at 99, and 213, and then, and then he, through the tunnel, even at Main Street is, is at capacity in the long range, at the capacity sometimes today. And then Beaver Creek at 213 is close to capacity today, and will continue to have that problem later on. So when I say problem, there's a metric that we use, it's the mobility standard, or mobility targets, depending on which document you're referring to. But it's, you all, I believe, are familiar with volume to capacity ratios and those kinds of things. So depending on where you are in the system, there's a, there's a number that we're looking for. And for all those locations, the future tells us that we're not gonna meet those numbers. And in all four of those locations, the solutions to get you back to the proper number is, is a big solution. So, for example, at 205 and 99, we did have some modest improvements, where we're looking at expanding the on-ramps to lessen the queuing problem that you see there pretty, pretty much every day. But that doesn't completely solve the problem back to the threshold that's in, you know, the state's plan or in Metro's plan. So what we're just flagging those four is, is, is components that need further looking at beyond the TSP, because it's, it's gonna be a joint process between the city and the state, I believe. And here's Gail to talk about the state's view.
Gail Curtis with ODOT. Good evening. I just want to reinforce the fact that a lot of work has been accomplished and is before you for ultimately in a few weeks for adoption, and it's evidenced by these fat documents here. And through this process, we have discovered the, what Carl has just described, that the facilities are beyond the current mobility standards, that really are a measure of congestion. And this issue is not unique to Oregon City. It is a region-wide issue, and to some extent, a statewide issue. There's places down in the Metford area, southern Oregon, that are facing these same issues. And our policy document, the Oregon Highway Plan, and our commission, the Oregon Transportation Commission, has addressed this issue through creating the opportunity for alternative mobility targets. And that is the next step that Carl was just referring to, that the staff has recommended or will be recommending in the report that you see, a actual project item to do future refinement work. So the two steps that the city, the commission, needs to take is to agree to this approach for a refinement plan to address or identify alternative mobility targets. And I can say a little bit more about what that might look like. And then the second thing that we ask is that you identify a timeframe. That's the provision from our commission, a refinement plan in a timeframe. We do not, we want you to decide what timeframe works for you. We don't have one in mind for you. We do hope to bring some funding to help assist with this, because it's a joint problem that we have. And in terms of what that mobility, alternative mobility targets might look like, it may be, it's really an identification of what's important to measure, to date, and traditionally for as long as we've been doing traffic analysis. How long would that be, Carl?
Since about nineteen fifty is about when the science started.
And the science was focused on measuring mobility or levels of congestion. Now, we are thinking that we're also interested in safety, we're interested in freight mobility, and we're interested in travel time. So there's different measures that can be put into play. We'll want the planning commission and the city council to advise us as the work is developed, to help describe the values that are important to this community. Another way that we might, a couple other ways that this might be solved is looking at a, rather than looking at individual intersections, which are measured today, that we take a corridor-wide look, where we agree that it would be acceptable for two out of the three facilities to fail during the peak travel hours, that we can all agree to that. Because quite frankly, the $220 million that is, has the team identified for the potential project list, that could be absorbed by the state system very easily and very quickly. But we know from listening to communities throughout the state that that's not where people want to invest their money. People are interested and concerned about the cost of congestion, but at the same time, there's a growing interest in providing travel options in terms of more transit, doing the infill of the sidewalks, the bicycle systems, and you can see that from this TSP work. So this approach that your TSP has taken is consistent with the region, where we look at the low-cost solutions, the operational solutions first, and the other travel choices, and then the capacity improvements are really the last. And- and then the capacity improvements are really the last. And so we know we can't build ourselves out of it, so the, more work will continue after the adoption of this plan. So we are recommending that you adopt this plan with the provisions that the city staff is included to agree to a refinement plan to address mobility targets for these facilities.
One thing I just wanted to interject that I learned is my involvement with the stakeholders' group, and Carl explained it pretty well during that process, is that Oregon City has a lot of traffic that does not originate in Oregon City. It's just people passing through from other places. And if you look at the map where most of the intersections are that have the challenges with congestion, those are the streets that people are passing through Oregon City. So it's not traffic being generated from in the city for the most part. And that's where the ODOT involvement comes in, is that we've got two major streets that pass through Oregon City and that's where most of that congestion is occurring.
And clearly, we see the potential, if we were to maintain our, the state position of the current mobility standards. And let me add that they have been reduced and part of the work that's reflected here is a reduction in the standards to be consistent with the regional transportation functional plan. So that is occurring, but also there's recognition that if we, if the state were to maintain our position, that we would see a impact to local economic development, that you would have a difficult time allowing growth. And the intent is really to create compact, walkable communities. That's what's, that's one of the key strategies as we move into the future. More to say on the topic of mobility targets?
I don't think so, unless you all have questions about that specifically. I guess, I guess I want to add a little bit to this too, in that, you know, like what we're proposing with the parking reductions, these are standards that will allow for more congestion and that seems like the industry trend or the region trend. And the reason why, I'm glad, we're glad that ODOT is proposing to help with this because they are ODOT facilities for the most part. Well, for, in these four locations, the city's kind of faced with a more immediate need just because we've got development bearing down on us and we don't have years to, especially, you know, if you look at these intersections right now that are at a point of failure and they don't meet our current code, you know, our code is pretty straight. If you don't meet it, then we have to not recommend approval of the development. And that can be a, you know, a small, you know, five lot subdivision or it can be a large site development project that everybody in the room would likely support. And so we're probably going to have to move into this, this review of what the right standard should be quicker than, you know, we don't have years to get that figured out. We have probably months to get that figured out. And the unfortunate part about that is there's others in the region that are working on it right now from what we've heard from ODOT. But their timeline is probably six, 12 months out before they're going to have a solution too. So it'd be, it'd be really nice to, you know, pick up what others have done and put that in place. It might help us save some money on what this study would work, but I'm not certain that we can wait that long. So it is a tough, this is, I think, the toughest issue we have because it's complicated by our development approval code. And the other things aren't so tough. This one is.
Carol Polley, have we gone basically through what we're going to discuss in this first session? Carol Polley?
Yes, with the low-cost solutions and allowing for more congestion and wanting to have other travel options, that brings the point up to in Oregon City, there's been bus lines cut and there's a problem with transportation in and around the city from getting people out of the neighborhoods and into, onto a bus line. So there's not even that option. There are no, there aren't the other travel options to get us to that point. And I see where that's a real, you know, issue that we need to address and it may not even be, you know, real diff, well, everything's pretty challenging, but, you know, maybe it's working with TRIMET or seeing what we can do for, you know, shuttles or thinking outside the box to see how we can, how we can meet that because it's going to be a long time before the, you know, the major ones are solved and they're going to have to be in steps.
Carol, I'm really glad you brought that point up because the lines that we have functioning essentially go to Fifth Street, Seventh Street, and Ninth Street. Ninth Street serving the Oldhamway, turning around and sort of serve the hospital. So you've got a corridor that I don't think serves maybe but a fourth or a fifth of the community.
It's serving the college and county offices primarily.
And the hospital.
And this is, I think this is a severe problem. I know this is outside, you know, what you're talking about in terms of the planning, but the fact is, we want to talk about using less cars and yet the opportunities for us to do so are very limited.
Please know that TRIMET was an active participant in our technical advisory committee in this work and they are interested in partnering on street projects that you might be doing. And true, there are cutbacks going on, but transit is a key strategy for the region and it's a, it's a very valid point that you make.
You get anywhere in Portland, you can't get anywhere in Oregon City. We pay the same taxes on TRIMET. Anyway.
Can I add to that, Doug?
Yeah.
Sorry, allergies. And what Doug's saying and Carol are, like, I live off Holcomb Boulevard. There's only two buses that I've ever seen on there, one in the morning, afternoon, and that's yet where a lot of the low-income housing projects are placed. And so those people are kind of left on their own to make it through. And I keep hearing about, we're trying to make more compact communities with walking, yet we're in Oregon. So they may, the bikes may work in downtown Portland, but in Oregon, it rains a lot and there's a lot of hills here in Oregon City and I just can't see all this emphasis on more people walking and biking to work because as you say, somebody said, there's, these are a lot of pass-through areas. And so a lot of people are going to continue to use their cars. There's just no other option. And walking paths are nice on your time off and on weekends, but people aren't going to be walking to work in Portland and trying to catch buses in Portland if there aren't any. So I just keep thinking, why do we keep placing so much emphasis on the biking for going to work and walking? Well, I just can't see it. Because even Portlanders last year told their new mayor, less on the bike path and more on fixing the potholes. So I'm just not following that line of reasoning for the future.
I guess I don't have that much problem with some aspects of the future. We do have, we do have a lot of bike traffic in lower section of the city. But the fact that we don't have the public transit, I think, is my major concern.
Mayor, one of the things that was discussed in our stakeholder meetings was the option of having a shuttle system that would take people from the downtown area to a more remote parking lot or parking structure. And so that, that may be something that is not necessarily part of this transportation plan that could be looked at as an intermediate way to provide some local transportation that would supplement the TRIMET bus system.
So you don't recommend us selling the trolleys yet?
I think that'd be good to have a work session on that specifically, on connecting outlying areas with the bus lines and parking.
Places that are underserved by the transportation system.
Is that already?
I thought I had requested a work session on the whole transportation system.
Well, what I, what I know has happened is we've, we've met with TRIMET and we've scheduled time to get together with staff to figure out how we can improve bus service in Oregon City. And I know TRIMET is, you know, it's been in the news that they've, they're facing some funding challenges as well. And, you know, when we met with them, Commissioner Polley was there, they indicated that they thought that there were some other partnerships that might be outside of the TRIMET management groups, so other subcontractors, if you will.
So that would be an increase of funds that we would have to pay?
Well, they did talk about grants and other ways to fund this program.
So that would be an increase of funds that we would have to pay. I want to be very clear.
That's my recommendation, Commissioner. That's exactly what they said. They would be willing to outsource, well, for us to buy additional services to get better coverage.
It's too bad TRIMET's not here because...
I appreciate the sense of humor of the person that picked the section pages. Section six funding and there's a picture of the trolley.
It's only a one-year plan.
Just a, just a quick comment, area that we didn't focus on. First of all, I appreciate the detail that you're giving in terms of future street extensions in the Beaver Creek area where, of course, we have lands that we hope will develop for employment lands. You've got a connection that goes off Loader and that connects to 213. When you come back, I'd like to see a little bit of the logic why we have that extension as opposed to something that actually just connects into Myers but then connects the other direction as well. The other point I made, I think I made when I talked to the, to the workshop, you can, several maps, but you can, the one I'm talking about is figure 15.
Fifteen?
Yeah. Where you, and it's not on figure 15 where you show it, but you show a roundabout being developed there on the intersection of the extension of Loader and Beaver Creek. If it's logical to have a roundabout there, why wouldn't it be logical to have a roundabout at Myers and Beaver Creek? And that's a question. And you don't have to answer it now, but I'm just throwing that out at this point.
Okay.
Mayor, you have a request to speak?
Yes. Damon?
One of the other things that came out about, well, and it kind of goes back to John's comment about, we've got to get used to just getting hit upside the head more often and that's called congestion. And if you don't want to get hit up the head quite as often, take a different way. But too bad, suck it up, you're going to get two by four. But one of the things that came up in our discussion of the oversea and congestion levels and all that was the idea of a different standard inside the regional center area versus the outlying districts, you know, basically the majority of the city is outside of the defined regional center. The key to that is defined regional center. Oregon City is using a map, but they have never adopted the map. So one of the things that needs to happen, either as part of the transportation plan or, you know, in, you know, is if you, we don't have a defined regional center, then how can we hold people to certain standards in and outside of it? So it's another element of things that have been coming up is we've been asking these questions along with the, you know, code enforcement and all that other fun stuff. But that's something that we can do as part of the TSP, so.
What? Tom?
As long as you're talking about street extensions, can I say a couple of words?
Yes.
Please. Half this room last night was filled with people from Holly Lane. I mean, it was packed in here. Biggest crowd I think I've ever seen at a planning commission.
Probably two-thirds.
Yeah. And I have to sincerely agree with them because that whole area, it's always been a concern. It's how I first got involved with this, the politics here in Oregon City, was that, that north extension off Holly Lane going up through the canyons up onto Holcomb Boulevard. They're adamly opposed to it, a lot of them because of taking away property for safety, but as Christine repeatedly points out, and I do too, until a complete geotechnical analysis has been done in that area, it's a very slide-prone area. And I know I mentioned it to Tony in the group last night, that maybe we could have a 48A put on the plan that, to make them feel more comfortable that before any road is planned, that we will complete a full study of the safety of that corridor, going through that area. It's not going to stop me from saying, yes, the whole transportation plan is 99% good, but I know since that's been a, something that's a bone for people up in Park Place that they don't want, and pretty much Christine and the Holly Lane group has led all the anti-annexations and they've been successful three times now, I know that they'll continue to do that if that road is still there because that makes them all uncomfortable about losing their safety on Holly Lane.
We did, we did, we did get a big Beaver Creek annexation this last time around. But in any case, you're quite right. And not only that, it siphons down to Redland and Redland's highly constrained by Abernathy Creek on one side and Buth on the other.
Brought that up too, the flooding in that area.
I don't think you're going to blow off.
Okay, let's go do it.
Thank you, Doug.
Yeah, thank you. With that, hearing no more questions. Oh, go ahead, Bob.
Well, my point of view, looking at this from the transportation land use analysis is that we can't afford not to adopt this plan. We've got to have something. We've got to have it for commerce, just looking towards the region in a manner in which to move goods and services. And there, you see it all the time, you know, plumbers going to somebody's house, electrician and stuff like that, multiply that by a thousand, these people are out there making a living and they're doing it on public streets. And there's funding involved in this. And our ODOT partners here indicate to us that they'll, they'll be good partners and I believe them, I trust them. We just can't afford to dilly-dally around. We can put this thing to death. We can bury it with analysis. But we're all grownups here at the table and we realize that this plan is going to be put together incrementally. It's not going to be put together comprehensively. And we're trying to put a puzzle together without taking the pieces out of the box. You know, we don't have a table to put the puzzle on, let alone the money to spend on it. I had $250 million all lined up yesterday, but the sequester came along and just blew it all away. But you see what I'm getting at?
True.
Yeah. You know, I've been doing this for 25 years and I love this word, planning. Boy, I still don't know what it means. It's decision-making, folks. Can you make it? It's management by crisis. It's government in action. It's people being people. And you don't have the money to spend to make it ideal. This is not an ideal plan because it's not ideal circumstances we're confronted with. The amount of traffic volume we move through this region just blow your mind. Just blow your mind. And the people that depend on it, you know, we have no concept. So I think, without bringing Pollyanna about it, I think that the traffic engineers, the staff, the technical people, the public, everybody that was involved in this thing have done a good job. I really do. So I'm just asking the commission to step up to the plate and fall in line. Well, I mean, you know, really, watch out, I'll put on my hat.
I'd love to.
You know, I don't really enjoy talking like this, but, you know, and I sure, I'm sure everybody thinks along these lines, but we're dealing with $242 million worth of public improvements here. And, you know, that's not, that's a fair chunk of change.
That's a big difference.
And we're dealing with trying to put together a collector's street, piecemeal, trying to get things to connect so that people can walk down the sidewalk and a mom in her stroller can feel halfway safe. That kind of stuff. It's the practical things. We're trying to save neighborhoods so that they're livable, so that traffic doesn't overflow and take shortcuts through neighborhoods that were never designed for that, you see? So my vote's for the plan and I realize that we've got to go through a few more steps and that kind of stuff, but at least you know where I stand. So I'll shut up.
You know, I think everybody that worked on this, that was involved in all the public input, I think it is just amazing and incredible. And I think that, you know, reading, I read through the whole thing a couple of times to try to get everything.
I never made it through it.
Falls asleep every time.
You might not want to do it late at night, but I feel that, you know, all the aspects are really covered in it and very thorough and everything. Yeah, it's great.
The other thing we have to keep in mind, it's a region, it's part of a regional plan. This isn't just the Oregon City plan. It comes into play for the metro area and there's big dollars involved. And we've got a timeframe we've got to meet so that we qualify for those funds and things of that nature. So we've got to keep our eye on the prize here. And the other thing that I'm really concerned about, because my family's been a victim of it, is the safety factor. Every day we get in a car, folks, every day. That night we got in our car, life changed.
Yes. Yes.
And so the safety factors, we can move volumes of automobiles. The question is, can we do it safely?
Yeah.
So the people get home at night to their families and that kind of stuff. So anyway, thank you for your attention.
With that, we'll go to the city manager's report.
We've got a couple more slides here to talk about.
Oh, okay. No, I'm sorry. I asked at the end of the presentation.
Quick next step slide.
Yeah, sorry, I'm right.
Is this going to be on the website or emailed to us?
Can we put it on the website? Well, we've got a webpage for the TSP. We'll put it on the website. So we're planning to meet next with the planning commission again and do yet another public hearing, and then we're coming back to this group for a city commission work session in May. I think the intent is to focus a little more on code amendments in future. So we've talked, you know, kind of big picture and how we got to where we are and some of the hot-button issues that we're facing. Code amendments are really the document that we have to use to implement some of these great ideas and how our development community really would be required to meet some of these requirements. So, and then three hearings and with the idea of adoption in June. And that's key because our funding kind of dries up at the end of June, right? This is a budget year kind of commitment, and so we want to make sure we get that done as well. So we think we're on track for success, but we need to hear from you if you've got, you know, issues that are, you know, going to be work.
See, I look at this and, Bob, you see, I could come up with a real stupid suggestion at the end of the first public meeting on May 15th with the city commission, and you've got at least two meetings to convince me of it as a stupid idea. So there's a lot of opportunities here to get us fixed up on the process.
I'm going to wear my hat, Doc.
Can I ask one question of Damon? Can you explain to me the regional map that you were talking about or the regional?
It's actually, it was something that we were given last night. The regional center was defined in 1998.
Right.
But there's a nice little note on that map that says, "Note, this regional center was never formally adopted by Oregon City or Metro."
Oh, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, we were identified very early on, and actually, even though it's not formally identified, it probably has been a major factor in us getting some of the grants we've been able to do in the Main Street area and so forth, that we have that kind of designation, even though we did that.
This is the map here. I don't know if it's in the packet of information you have, but it's titled Oregon City Regional Center, and there's a dark red line that outlines it. And then the note that Damon's talking about says, "Note, the boundary of the Oregon City Regional Center has not been adopted by the City of Oregon City or Metro."
So is that something we should, like, be moving towards doing?
If you're going to be enforcing code, you better have it as part of the code.
Our recommendation is that the city adopt that.
Yeah, thank you. Is that also going to be on the website or?
It's in the package.
Oh, it's in?
It's in the package.
Okay, okay.
That is a good designation.
I don't think you have no mechanism to enforce it.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, I apparently have somebody else.
Can I ask one other question?
Sure.
Of John. John, did you mention last night that Clackamas County is going to come before either the planning commission or the city commission with their plan in May?
We've scheduled for the planning commission and the date of, it was, do you think? I don't remember the date.
It was May 13.
It was May 13.
Yeah, I do. So Clackamas County is working on their TSP.
Does their plan interact with ours? I mean, I know we've had our own TSP group. Do they know what we've been doing or we know what they've been doing? Because it does involve places like Holly Lane, which is in the county but not in the city, Redland Road, things like that. Are we going to, at some point, intersect together the programs or are they always kept separate?
Well, that would make sense.
You want the right and the left-hand to know what we're doing?
Sometimes.
We're going to put toll gates at each one of those intersections.
I love it.
The county's approach to this has been to let the areas within the city limits be planned by the city.
Yeah.
And this is a planning document. The area of conflict that we're having is just the funding piece. You know, our position has been, you know, there's a lot of county traffic on our roads, and I'm sure there's a lot of city traffic on their roads. So I'm not sure where that balances, but it's kind of like with ODOT jurisdictional, you know, requirements. When we're talking, we use these project lists to develop our system development charges, right? So that's a step that we've yet to get through. But the county's looking at their liability that are outside of city limits, and it's not just Oregon City, it's Wilsonville and all the other cities that are in the county. They're looking at their transportation needs everywhere but the city limits.
Right.
Okay? And so their projects kind of stub up to the city and just, on the map, they just stop right there. And I see some flaws there, but I think, you know, this is a high enough level to where we can agree that when we get to a project like Beaver Creek Road that currently isn't, it's their road from 213 out, but it's in our TSP. And so when we get to those projects, we're going to have to, you know, these documents will help force us to kind of communicate more. And also because of some of the more recent discussions that we've had about the concern about support, I mean, a lot of these projects hopefully will get grant-funded, and so when, you know, when, we're always seemingly competing with the county on these grant projects, and the idea would be they would support some of the projects that affect the city.
That's what we're going to be hoping because where that map stubs, the taxpayers continue beyond that line, paying their taxes to the county. So it's a challenge sometimes for city managers to remind county staff that every taxpayer in our city is a county taxpayer as well, and so there's a certain level of service they should receive, and that we don't necessarily always stand on our own, we're not really able to.
The reason I brought that up is a big concern last night of a lot of the Holly Lane individuals where the city comes down Holly Lane a certain way and it's at the other end, and they're kind of stuck in the middle between these two. So they're hearing our city TSP, but they haven't heard from the Clackamas, and they're not quite sure how it's going to totally impact them, except for the fact that it's on our plan. And several people, what was the word they used that we were, they were being shoved down their throat? Was that the word?
Something like that.
They felt uncomfortable that they're in between.
I think they said we were dumping our traffic down their road.
Our traffic trash, yeah. Of course, the one thing nobody on Holly Lane seems to understand is there's not a single foot of Holly Lane inside the city limits.
They felt the top of it was.
No. It's in our urban growth boundary, but it's not in our city boundary, so we still don't control a single foot of Holly Lane.
You know, I'm going back to the toll bridge, you know? They drive on our road all the time.
I think we want toll gates.
I think they want on Holly Lane.
Thank you, John.
I was just going to say, I just wanted to just revisit real quick when we're talking about these alternative mobility standards at the four intersections that we identified and that the fix, and we do appreciate being able to work with the state to address these because we do realize that, you know, we really need to be smart about how we invest the limited public funds that we have available and what do we want our community to look like. But that what we're putting in the TSP doesn't solve the problem for existing development. We have standards, and until a new standard's adopted, we have to rely on the standards that are in place right now. And we are bumping up on that. Now, we, you know, ODOT has a standard that they use for their V over C for account plan amendments and zone changes and enlargements, but we also have a standard that we use on the state facilities, which we think is prudent, that we use at the local level for site plans or subdivisions. So I just don't want any, I'm just putting it out there so no one's surprised that if we don't aggressively try to obtain and understand and implement and adopt an alternative mobility standards, we are going to run up on transportation issues that prevent us approving applications. So we kind of went over it kind of quick, but this is one of the things that really concerns our departments because there isn't a cheap, easy fix. We're out of them. And so I just want to make sure everyone understands that it is a high, high priority that kind of just came down, and we haven't had these discussions previously at our goal setting or even in previous work sessions. So we'd be happy to answer any questions if you have.
I think what I kind of go through, and I'll have a lot of questions for you guys.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor? The other thing that kind of concerns me a little bit is without growth, you're really threatening your tax base.
Yes.
And if you don't have your tax base 10, 15 years down the road, your budget system is really going to be interesting.
You're right.
You won't have the money to hire policemen or street sweepers or park library personnel, on and on and on. It's just going to get more and more costly unless, as Tony said, we aggressively attack this system that we're left with. And the other thing I noticed is, what Tom's alluded to is that we've got some real problems with slide areas. We really do. And, I mean, that's serious stuff. It's threatening people's homes and our transportation systems.
I'm glad you mentioned that because I was going to point out, but what Damon has on is blowing away the bluff of dynamite. That's what actually happened on 213, and they had slide problems for years after that.
Yeah.
Blue Creek Apartments.
I think it's probably the same soils, same kinds of soils.
The other thing that impressed me was the communication aspect of those that attended the meeting, they really want to get involved, and they do have some problems. And the city's, I think, reached out in spirit to say, yeah, we want to work with you, but, you know, find the right jurisdiction, for heaven's sake. Some of them shouldn't be talking to the county and that kind of stuff. So it's the puzzle I get back to. So, but I think if something that we all work together, we can get it done.
As we will. Carol Polly?
No, that was from last time.
That's from last time. Okay, with that, city manager forward. Thank you very much. Appreciate your consultations, and I know we'll be hearing more from some of you.
So, Mayor and commission members, the removal of paper machine number four, which is the really, really large one down at Blue Heron, is going to be taking place soon, and I've asked Mr. Conklin to give us a brief update on what's going to be happening down there because you're going to see a steel structure that some would call a building, and it's going to be partially dismantled, so, Tony, can you fill us in on it?
Sure. We've been working with NRI. There's in paper machine four, the largest, one of the larger, where the largest paper machine was on the site, there's a very large ceiling crane in there that they're taking out, and we've worked with them to look at a couple alternatives to try and remove that in the least impactful way. And what we've identified is on the very south end of the facility, in an area where it's not the original building itself, and it was an addition that was added on later, they're going to remove some of the siding associated with the wall and the roof on the south end and lift that internal crane out. We looked at alternatives of trying to come out sideways through a smaller hole, but because of the existing buildings on the west side of Main Street, there wasn't enough room to pull it out safely. And so they're going to take that and they're going to remove part of that siding that's there as well as part of the roof. They're going to remove the crane, and then they're going to replace that with plywood that's painted to match. That'll be weatherproofed and painted to match. So that will be some activity. You've probably seen a crane being set up out on the site within the last two weeks or so in preparation for that removal. Our building department has reviewed the demolition plan to ensure that it's, what they're removing does not affect the stability of the structure and how it would be put back. So that'll be some activity that you're probably going to see here pretty quick.
Will that be in the newspaper? Just because, you know, if we can get the word out to people so they don't get anxious when they see activity going on down there?
Yeah. I think that's a great idea. I'm not sure that, we could put together a press release, but it might be advisable to communicate with the trustee or NRI first before we do.
Well, I was just thinking, our citizens will get very anxious and start calling.
Yeah. So we could see about doing a press release or maybe putting something on our website.
Or maybe send it out to all of the CIC people and let them know that they can calm their neighborhoods down.
I'd be a little more comfortable maybe just circulating via email, and I'm not sure we want to send a press release out every time they're doing something major.
Well, you're right. You're right. Yeah, yeah. But people are going to see buildings coming down and they're going to go.
And we could certainly try and utilize our website and.
Yeah.
Tony, I think that Katie has a list of all the neighborhood associations and all their contacts, so we'll get that.
Would that be acceptable?
Have them look at your website.
Possibility is a lot of people don't look at the website.
That's true.
They just start calling. It's maybe just the first, just a first-time press release saying in the coming months you'll be seeing activities, starting with.
Yeah, and I guess I just don't know what they're doing. We don't know all of their demo plans.
Because you're right, people are going to get anxious. They don't know what they're doing.
And they will also say, well, you told us this part but not that part. The problem is, we don't know that part.
Yeah, yeah.
They may not know, and they may not be willing to tell us, so, I mean, usually when we issue press releases, we want to have all the facts.
Well, you're right.
Communications, though.
But a heads up was, I think.
Could we just, maybe we'll see how this one goes, and if we get inundated with calls, we'll revisit.
Sure. Yeah, perfect. That's perfect. Thank you.
So I also want to let the commission know that this afternoon I put the finishing touches on the budget message, and the budget document will be going off to the printer. We're expecting to deliver it to the Budget Committee Wednesday, the evening of April 10th, 2013. So that's a big project, about $800 of staff time goes into that every year, so, and that'll be changing to going into that every other year, now that we're going to a two-year budget, and that'll free up a lot of our staff time to accomplish goals at the commission and the community. So thank you for that. Also, I believe the commission knows this, but I'm really pleased that we've reached a tentative agreement with our police union on a three-year contract, and we'll be bringing that forward to you as well, hopefully by the end of the month. And then, yeah.
I had just one more thing I could just throw in real quick. Just another reminder, I believe I gave this to you last time, that on Saturday, April 13th, from 1:00 to 4:00, the South End Concept Plan, open houses occurring at the McLaughlin Elementary School, and everyone from the community is invited to come and look at the three alternatives that have been generated through that public outreach process, and then also that on April 17th is our Arbor Day celebration with a planting, a kids' story and time and crafts at the Carnegie Library from 10:15 to 11:15 on April 17th, and then a tree planting and poetry from 12:30 to 1:30 at McLaughlin Elementary School on South End Road, and then the awarding of the Tree City USA at 7:00 at our city commission meeting that night here.
That's a good reminder.
After which you will see the Tree City USA flag flying on your pole out here with your other flags.
Great.
Thank you, Tony. And then the last thing is, as I understand it, this weekend, there was a little mix-up on some of the scheduling and the kind of meeting that was taking place here at City Hall, and then moved down onto the Blue Heron site was a meeting of consultants that Mr. Conklin was leading, and there was a little mix-up about roles and responsibilities and whether elected officials were supposed to be part of that meeting. So that was brought to my attention by a couple of commission members, and I wanted to put it out there so that the commission could discuss it and consider alternatives and see if there's some resolution that everyone can live with.
I was going to suggest, we're going to have, we're still going to have elected officials from different places making tours at that site. And under those conditions, I think it's ideal to have at least a couple of our members who are commission accompanying those elected officials.
Absolutely.
The, I think in general, if you go into, I mean, I guess somewhere I saw the notification that there was going to be a tour. I don't know where it came from. And I didn't go, but I think it'd probably be somewhat beneficial when those notifications go out that we know that.
Would you like us to designate maybe in red letters, elected officials not required?
Well, no, I don't want to make it that large, but no, to indicate that this is really a staff thing.
It's a staff level.
So we can put a parentheses or something after each one, "staff level"?
I don't think I thought about whether I would go on that tour or not, but I did not know that it probably wasn't the appropriate thing to do. The other thing I was going to comment on is, in general, when we have these kinds of tours or events, of course, anytime when the public's invited, we're invited. If it's not open to the general public, then I think it's got to be made clear whether it's appropriate for commissioners to be there. So there should be some mechanism to let us know that that's the case. Because I don't know that I thought about it either way when I saw the notice of a tour. I just didn't get down there.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. I don't have the notice in front of me. I don't have the notice in front of me, I haven't even seen what you saw, so I don't. I knew it was going to occur, but I don't know how I knew it was going to occur. So we can make sure we write staff level only when, when that's what it is?
Yeah, I don't remember seeing a subject on the notice, what the subject was, because that would have been a big clue.
Okay, we'll try to do that.
Well, to me, the tour was not the important part. The meeting that was going on previous to the tour was what the important part was. And I think it's not appropriate to have meetings labeled staff only. As a commissioner, I feel like I'm entitled to learn anything I want to about this city at any meeting there is. And if it's not appropriate for me to be there, if it's something I need to make a decision on later, that's fine, I don't need to be there. But if it's anything to do with this city, I feel it's appropriate for commissioners to be involved. And if it's a meeting open to the public in City Hall, I don't see excluding commissioners.
Well, no, I don't either. That's what I'm saying, if it's a public meeting, there should be no issue. We have dozens of meetings here every, the commission's going to have to sort this out again.
We'll have to, we have to decide it out for ourselves, I think.
Well, the commission has to decide that. This commission has to give me.
No, the commission does not have the right to tell me as a public citizen when I can be here or not.
Commission, we need your direction. Well, I would, I would say, nobody's going to tell you, you can't be here when it's a public meeting. I think when it's a staff meeting, I don't, you know, we've had, we've had these discussions of whether we should have commission members at labor negotiations and so forth.
Right.
And I don't think we should. I mean, these are, these are things that ultimately come to us, and that will be the case from, anything coming from the RFP, I mean, you'll be making a recommendation to us in terms of who should be appointed, and the point is, if a commissioner says something at one of those things, everybody's going to say, "Oh." In order to get commissioners' approval, we better write this into the RFP, where it may not be that relevant to the RFP itself.
Well, I've heard that argument before, and I think that commissioners have to be wise enough to keep their mouths closed.
Only if it was that, sir.
That doesn't always happen. The way, the way a wise old city attorney once explained it to me, commission members, when they're acting alone, are, they have the exact authority that citizens have, and so if we're having a staff meeting or a meeting privately with HR director or city attorney, we don't normally have citizens come in, but they're not public meetings, as the mayor has indicated, there really is a difference there. But also, just because we have meetings that aren't open to the public, if the entire commission, for example, wanted to have a policy and designate somebody to come to certain meetings, like union negotiations, things like that, that's appropriate, the commission needs to give us that direction, because we don't, otherwise, we're left to our own devices to make those calls every time. And you all don't agree on this, I don't think. So that puts staff in the very unenviable position of saying, "Hi, nice to see you, you can't come in here." And we don't like that position, because collectively, the commission has the authority to make those decisions, individually, not. So that's why you need to give me direction on what you want us to do.
Well, I, I have to take a few minutes and think about it, so I can't give direction right now personally.
Well, we couldn't do that in today's session, anyway.
Well, we've not, we've not had to.
Well, I thought there might be a consensus, there was a consensus on this at the last three retreats I've been to, on the roles and responsibilities, and I thought there may be a consensus, so you wouldn't need to take action.
I know.
But if you want to bring back the roles and responsibilities, once again, on the agenda, I think we should do that and clear it up, and you can give us a policy that you want us to follow, and we will do so.
Yeah, because apparently, once again, I'm in the dark on what happened, so maybe someone can fill me in.
I don't even remember what's on the notice.
Well, you know, I, I thought. Bring me to the light. I thought about this, and the analogy that I kind of like to use is, at our restaurant, when the cooks are coming up with recipes and stuff, I really don't want to be in the kitchen while they're doing all that, but I want them to come with me to the end result so I can decide whether it's going to be on the menu or not. So there's kind of a time and a place in figuring out those boundaries and what the, what the roles are. It's going to come to us eventually, when it comes to that point, when all the pieces are put together and it's time to make policy decisions.
That's true, but I also agree that this is such a huge project. If, if one person worked on this for five years, it would take all of your time to try and get a grip on this project. And I don't think that anyone that wants to learn more about the project, including what other people from the public are proposing, is, is time or wasted energy.
I don't think so either.
I don't think it's wasted. I, I guess I didn't interpret that we were invited, so.
The, I mean, the thing was, this was a tour of people that were going to write, potentially write proposals in terms of the, of the, of the basic.
RFP?
RFP, well, I'm trying to, I'm trying to think of the right word for what the RFP is, but a visioning process. And they're looking at the site from the standpoint of, what are they going to put in their RFP? I don't, so I don't know why we would necessarily want to be there, that's their, that's their evaluation.
That's what I was going to say, that would be a clue to mean to not be there, because this has to come from them. It can't be coming from me as a commissioner.
No, that's not the point.
Yeah.
The point is just hearing what the community is saying.
The community isn't down there.
That was, this room was full.
Of all consultants.
All consultants.
There was no public here.
But they were public.
Right.
There were citizens here from Oregon City.
You didn't go.
There were consultants here from Oregon City.
Consultants.
Yeah, and they're trying to figure out, they're trying to figure out what they're going to write and what they're going to look at, and come up with their plan, and, you know? I, I like the mayor's suggestion about just making it clear, because all, I just had the date on my calendar, and I didn't know what the description was. If I would have known the description, then that would have been a big clue. But I did not know the description, so maybe having it just, you know, more descriptive of what they are would be helpful. Somehow I got the date on my calendar.
So you want us to, would it be helpful if we use public versus non-public? Because right now, we actually have a process for public meetings, all the public meetings, Nancy, I has to post and follow the statutes in our internal policies, and I think those are pretty clear to all of you, which ones are public.
Right.
I kind of don't want to assume that all of the others are, that you're not welcome at those, unless otherwise, you know, specified, but we have done a lot of tours down there. We've done a lot of tours down there that aren't open to the public, Mayor. This is a little wrinkle in your theory, that we've had, we've done some tours down there where we've invited all of you exclusively to join us, because the statute requires or provide for exceptions to open meetings when you're doing a tour like that, and we've had other elected officials from around the region, and state and federal governments there, where we really want our political leaders there, interacting with them, and lobbying them, and talking to them about your community and your values, and that's important, so. This is a, you're, you're out of this one, I think, Bob. This is, this is not, this is not. This very seldom happens. I mean, think of, we've done, what, three dozen tours down there? I know I've been on that many.
Well, if it's not the tour, that's the problem.